All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Everyone can join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the routine of justice for all.
Great, thank you. Thank you to everyone who's here tonight for our study session and thank you to any of those who are listening online, we appreciate it. Tonight, our study session will be updates on our superintendent search and prep for the interview phase. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Pierce, or we'll just turn it around over to you, Bill? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll turn it around over to you.
Mr. President and Dr. Pierce, thank you for having us here. My colleague Kevin Chase is joining us tonight. Want to give you an update on the search and next steps. So, we have... No, I don't want to goodbye, Bill. I'm good, okay? Go ahead, Josh. I'm here just to watch and help, so I'm fine. No, I'm good. We like to... So, we've been personally talking with individuals that are current superintendents or in leadership positions about the job. We have applications out to several people, not as many as I had anticipated that we would at this point. We don't have a completed application at this time, but we have verbal commitments that people are going to turn those in. So, and we're following up with those. So, the closing is the 10th of January. And then, we will be back here and meet with you on the 15th. And at that meeting, that'll be an executive session meeting where you'll have the opportunity to make decisions as to who you would like to come and meet with you personally to talk about the job and the district and then make a decision following that regarding who you'd have back for final interviews. So, the session, when you review files, you'll have an opportunity to see all the files. And we will have vetted those files and done background search, search on them and give you a, an opportunity to see what we found. And then, we will also let you know if there's, basically we put them in an ABC stack. A being, if you don't look at these people, someone else is going to probably be interested and they're going to interview elsewhere. B, solid, they have good records, there's nothing there that would keep you from paying attention to these people and everything checks out on them. C, you may not want to spend a lot of time on them, but it's going to be your decision. You'll take a look and have, by the time you come in on the 15th, you will have had the opportunity to read all those files. So, that night will be, the work will be, instead of sitting around reading, talking about what you've read, who you've seen as interesting or answering questions about, okay, I saw this in your resume or I saw this, is there a question, is there an answer to this obvious, what appears to be a question that comes up here in this person's writing? The writing is important too. The applicants are going to address the challenges and opportunities in writing and that gives you an opportunity to see how they, how they think, how they write, are they, do they have some ability to put thoughts in, in order that makes sense and resonates with you? Or is this full of typos and we don't want to spend any time on it? But you'll have the opportunity to read all those. So, during that meeting, we'll have the opportunity as a board to decide, we want to talk to this, these people. We'll provide you with some interview questions as starters. You can, they'll range from questions about fiscal responsibility and leadership and curriculum and other topics around the superintendency. But those are questions that you can use or not, or write your own questions, okay? And that those would be done. And if you have questions you want to do, those will be submitted to game by the, you know, within a couple of days and then ready for the interviews the following, the following week. We'll notify the applicants that you choose to see and schedule them in for the interviews. Now, you'll see under number three on the agenda in front of you, that's a proposal for the interview time, start time. Some districts have gone to preliminaries, interviews all day on a Saturday. Some do all day during the week. We're recommending that you start in the afternoon and go into the evening for a couple of reasons. We anticipate, you'll make the decision, but we anticipate that this will be open public meetings first round and that that gives your community and staff the opportunity to sit and watch the interviews and also provide some feedback to you. We also recommend an observation panel. Think about this. We're saying that 10 community and 10 staff have the opportunity to watch the interaction between you and the candidates and then give you feedback on that. That can happen in a couple of ways. The most recent protocol used is that everyone has a Chromebook and is sitting there and in real time responding to how their, the candidate is responding to the questions you're asking and then you get those. Many times, those are printed out after the interview and made, given to the board right away so that they have not only on their, not only on the computer in front of you, but hard copy. So, community, what is that? That, I've seen this happen a couple of different ways in relation to observation panel for a community. It's, one way is the board, each board member picks two people, invites two people to participate in the interviews. Another is an application process that anyone who would like to serve on the observation panel as a community member, fill out an application. Basically, the application is who they are, do they live in the district, whether they have kids or not in the district. But, you know, are they a parent or a business owner or a service club president, whatever? And boards have found it less, what, less pressure when there's a random drawing out that group of community members that, that apply. Does that make sense? Rather than, you know, you, you, the only reason you're there is because you live next door to Mr. Valentine, that type of thing.
I actually kind of, I actually kind of prefer the approach of we pick them and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Because, like, I can pick two people who have, like, different opinions that I know are maybe critical about one thing, one district may be more specific about something else. And then I can really kind of, I feel like I can kind of pick, you know, the kind of feedback will get a little bit better than just random. Because random could be good, could be not good, you just don't really know, right? You just don't know if it's going to be...
The luck is a draw.
A lot of people one thing or a lot of people who care about another issue, but when we're picking them and I feel like we have, we can select issues that I feel, I just, I think that's, that's how I... Yeah, so, I don't necessarily mean somebody who has, like, an issue on one thing, but I mean, like, maybe there's a person, I can't really think of anybody right now, but like, there's a person I know who is very thoughtful and just very good at, like, seeing through things and that, that's what I mean by issues. But not necessarily that they have an issue with her, with, with the district or how the district does something or anything like that, but just, just more of a, you know, there's certain personalities who really kind of lend to this kind of thing, you know, who can kind of perceive.
If, the only recommendation we would have if, if the board chooses to go that way is, is since you have the opportunity to try and, try and get a representation of across, across the spectrum of the district population. So, President Galvitt, that's, that's a decision point for, for you guys. You don't need to make that tonight, but...
Sure.
We certainly will on, before the 15th of January. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Now, one, I think during the last process, we kind of talked about this now, either we have the observe, observation panel, but we have maybe like paper copies that, so if 50 people showed up, if they felt the need that they wanted to...
Yes.
To...
Feedback from the...
Feedback on a copy to like pass it to us or leave it with us or something, just as, I know we have the panel and that'll be this particular official ones putting all the things in and we work to get those, but the opportunity for those who maybe didn't get the panel but do still take the time to show up, will they have the ability to...
Everybody in the, everybody in the room will have an opportunity to provide feedback.
Okay.
That's great. Yeah, that's, that's great.
The observation panel is going to be, they don't particularly have your attention, but...
Yeah.
Everybody will have an opportunity to spend a...
That's great.
Fill out a form.
Yeah.
Perfect. You don't have to though. I think that would be everybody's goal, I think. I think we're probably on the same page there. But I'm just less concerned about what people think, I'm more concerned about just getting the right person. Like, whatever people think, like, whatever. Like, I just want to get the best person and that's how I, even, so we can, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, good. The dates we have down to the 28th and 29th of January and we have down here beginning at 5:30 and three interviews a night. That's anticipating that you might interview six candidates or six applicants and, and you might interview more. If you do, we can pack it up to 4:30 or change the days, so...
Make it go later.
We, when we get, when we get there on the 15th, we'll have a clear picture of what we're going to do with that.
Yeah.
Because at that point, we can, we can decide if we want to see three or seven or whatever.
Excellent, yeah, absolutely.
And I would even, I would even say if we, like, if we, maybe we don't go with six, maybe there's just four outstanding candidates, then maybe we back the time to six or 6:30 and allow for more of the community to maybe get here and be involved in the process if something, so again, it all depends on what we find out, but I think we've got some pretty good options.
That's, that's your call.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the evening's perfect.
Bill, can I ask a question here about timelines? So, would you recommend waiting until the beginning of January? Like, I don't feel like we can, shouldn't wait till after January 15th to try to get the word out about applying if that's the process that's going to be used to be on the interview panel, it's just like that's too short of a timeline?
Yeah.
So, we'll need to be able to communicate, here's the time and the dates of the panel, I think, when people are applying?
Yeah, I think as soon as the board...
And it decides...
Decides how many they want on that panel, then getting that out, getting that word out, application wise, is critical.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, we can't wait till 15th to decide, yeah. Till 15th, right, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're not, I don't think we're going to decide in this session, but I, I think we can probably give a couple of days, maybe give Mike and Brittany a chance to weigh in on, on, on it a little bit and then go from there. But I think last time we were, we were going to give a couple of weeks notice. I think if we get, I think if we get this out somewhere in the next week, I think that'll give enough time to collect applicants, so...
Yeah. I'm just thinking, like, maybe whether we do it before or after break, it's either going to be probably before or January 6th, you know, so it's kind of up to you.
I personally think we get it out as soon as we can and we keep pushing it out and pushing it out so we can get more than 10 applicants and we can maybe get 100, but...
And encourage everybody to come and so they can still, still be part of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, on staff, you can do it more than, there's more than one option with staff. You can ask bargaining units to send their own representative rather than you, you pick them, or you can do it again with anyone on, on your staff. You have a large staff, can apply to be on the...
I feel like that's how we did it last time, because remember, we did this part once?
You did.
We've done this part once already?
You did.
So, I feel like we, you know, it's maybe not a bad idea to stick with how we did it last time and just do it again. Like, we have the application, we sent it out, just indicated whether you're community or parent or staff member, I mean, we can dig it all out and... Yeah. 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 I just don't think we got to, we never got to the part of using yes, but that was what we said.
I don't know, did we decide that, that we were going to randomly select them? I remember having a discussion about it.
We did, we, yeah, we did the ran, we did randomly and then we sent out the application and then we, that's where we, we didn't get into the random.
Yeah, we never got to the part of selecting people, but, but I believe and I can verify that the communication said that participants would be randomly selected or something to that effect.
One thing, you might, sorry, Bill, I should be quiet. This is my first time with Bill, but, so just shortly, I've been a, I was a school soup, actually a school soup for 18 years and then I was an ESD soup and I come off for eight after that and I just retired in July. So, yeah, she's joining me soon, but you could always advertise three dates, 28, 29, 30, 27, 28, 29 and advertise the fact that it may be less, right? And I don't know how many you can do in a night, Bill. Is it three only or do you do four?
Actually, you can do four.
You could advertise three dates, you could have a max of 12, right? And then if you don't need three, after you look at the applications on the 15th, you say it's only going to be these two days and that's the number of days we're going to do.
That's what, 12. Do you think, do you think we will, we will select 12?
I, I, you might have 12, but you're not going, you won't interview them.
Yeah, do you think we are going to, we are going to choose to interview 12 people? I doubt it.
No.
But Josh, it doesn't, it doesn't, it just doesn't really matter, like, how many we have applying, it just matters how many we select.
I'd be surprised. I just don't, don't think you would.
Comes down to advertising the three days and cutting back.
I mean, it depends, it depends, you might see a pool come in and you go, whoa, there's, we have to talk to this many people because we see the, the level of qualification. It's, it's too hard to push somebody out and they may be the right person, so you'll, you'll know that when you start reading the material.
It's always easier to go back, sure, do three.
We can, we can advertise the three days and then just fill in the first two if need be.
So, do you want to advertise the 28th, 29th and 30th? Got a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that and then we'll cut it back.
Block your calendars out. The way we have this set up now for the 4th, 5th and 6th of February and it's, it is critical that all five board members are able to be there. The candidates will be in the district all day, but the board obligation typically starts around 4:00, 4:30. So, it's always good to have one of the board members introduce the candidates to the groups that they'll see during the day and it doesn't have to be the same person all day or every day, but a board member having the opportunity to introduce these candidates to whatever group they're seeing. Again, we can deal with that later, but it's critical, starting at 4:00, 4:30, that from then until 9:00, 9:30, whenever the evening ends, that all of you are available.
That's essentially one candidate per day, per day for those three days, right?
Yeah. And well, the, the protocol regarding the strategies, questioning strategies for those interviews are different than preliminary interviews where every candidate on this preliminary round will have the same questions. May have different follow-up questions, that's, that's how that goes, but final interviews may not be exactly the same as you now know the candidates better and there's some things you want to drill down on in relation to their experience or training. It may look a little different. So, that's where we are.
On, on the final interviews, then, that's obviously the final interview would be open, correct?
No.
For the finer...
I recommend executive session.
Okay. I didn't know, well, I, I knew we had that part, I just didn't know if there was a part before that where there's more, more questions for...
Well, there's an opportunity for that person to meet staff and community members, there's a community forum, there's...
Okay.
And feedback, feedback from each of those to you regarding how that person related or answered questions with that group.
That's what I'm thinking of. So, those forums would kind of work their way and then we would be kind of the, yeah, yep, yep.
It's, it's however you structure, you, you get to make that call, but yes.
Yeah, I can go back and double check and I think so too, because if, if, that's what question I have.
You had dinner with them as well.
Yeah. But we had even mapped out, like, what it was going to look like last, in, you know, we just didn't get there. But if the, if I recall correctly, I think that the, in that, the, the board was going to, it was going to be community, then dinner, I can look it up here, and then the board last, because that would, because then you'd have all the feedback from all of the groups. Because one question I have is if the board meets before the community forum, then would they go back into exec session after the final, like, at the end of the 6th? Or when do they go back into exec session? Is that on the 7th?
On, on the 6th typically. The evening of the 6th. Some boards would go the next morning and do a lot, you know, read and ponder overnight, but wrapping up pretty quickly, at least while it's fresh in your mind.
Yeah, because I do remember we had, whatever forums we're doing are going to happen and then there'll be dinner and then the board forum. That way we can collect any feedback from the forums that had happened that day.
Yeah.
Board members are working.
Anything else.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'm going to pull it up here. Is that ringing a bell with you?
The, yes, the, the sequence does.
I want to see if I can...
You're probably going to wind up reading that material after, after your, your session with...
I don't remember that, but it is valuable for sure.
It's tough because you do the forums and then you're having dinner with the candidate and asking questions and you don't want, so...
So, so actually, you guys, what, what we had, I pulled up the document from last time, so, and it doesn't get to what you're asking, but it was all the different groups, student group, you know, staff, principals, everybody. And then it was 5:00 to 5:45 dinner with the board and cabinet and then 6:00 to 7:00 community forum and 7:15 to 8:30 exec session, interview with the board. So, the interview, your exec session with the candidate was after everything else. And I do remember that too, what you're saying. I do.
Yes, a similar. The, the tough part is, the hiccup I see is the first two nights, trying to get all that information and follow-up questions for the candidate versus that, at least after the final candidate, we'll still have that information. So, as we go to make a decision, we'll at least still have the forum notes from everyone that we can review and talk amongst ourselves. So, we'll, we'll have it one way or the other, how quickly we get it to ask the follow-up questions might be a little bit challenging, but...
Oh, we have, Mr. President? All we have, Mr. President.
The other thing I was wondering about, or wanted to confirm, so, so January 15th, that's typically for semi-annual study session, and we do have a couple items for study session. So, and, and so we were thinking, like, by combining this, that we could do a little bit of study session, then the board would go to exec session for, like, the study session doesn't have anything to do with soup search, it's other stuff, right? Then it would be exec session, the board would look over the applicants, and then they need to come back out in regular meeting and announce. I think that was the, another question that kind of came up last time around.
There would be a-
The technicality around, when do they say, these are the three, and, because they are making a decision, right, about-
The 15th is preliminary.
Correct. So they don't, they're not, they don't need to say, here are the people that we're bringing in?
No, they, these are, those-
Because, do you remember, we only got to that part last time, and don't you remember there was, like, some discussion around?
Do we have to come out and confirm things?
Do you remember that? Yeah.
So, on the, on the 29th is when-
Okay, but that-
You do come out, and in public meeting, and there's a motion to bring these people back.
Okay. But I'm just looking to you guys, because do you remember this from, from last time?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if that's-
We did, I did, I did come out after executive session and made note of what transpired.
Occurred, right. But, but had the board said, okay, these are the six we're going to interview, would they, they wouldn't come out and say, they don't need to come out and say anything?
They don't.
I just want to make sure, okay.
I was gonna say, I don't know, I don't, I don't think we, I think we did, just based on the circumstances.
Okay.
Because we, we're not gonna come out.
This, this board, this board wanted to be really transparent about letting everybody know as much as you do.
Okay, so that was, all right, I just want to make sure we scheduled the night right to address that.
It was.
Yeah, okay, can we just, can we just talk through the dates real quick? Because I, did we move our semi-annual treat to the 15th? Is that what we did?
Mm-hmm.
So we, so we don't have the meeting on the 8th, so we have-
You want this on a different date.
We moved it from the 8th to the 15th.
To do the one, the one day.
To, to be able to do this and that at the same time.
But it's only a retreat, it's not a business meeting.
It's not a business meeting.
So the retreat's only gonna be hour, hour and a half, it's not gonna be-
Correct.
It's not gonna be a full, long meeting. Yeah.
It's not a board meeting.
We'd be able to get second.
And there's, pardon me?
No.
No.
What time would you like us here?
I, I mean, based on what's, I think, on the agenda for the study session, I think we probably could get, if we start at 5:30, we could probably get into executive session between 7:00, 7:30.
I, I'm thinking even sooner than that, you know?
Sooner than that, okay.
Yeah, like, maybe an hour in study session, and then exec session.
So if we put down 6:30, is that reasonable?
Well, I think the study session would start at 5:30.
5:30, yeah.
And then the board would go into exec session.
We'll just be here.
Yeah, I, I think 6:30 is probably reasonable, but-
Yeah, 6:30 for you guys, yes, for you.
If it does go a little bit longer, then, then we'll, we'll go.
Right, no, that works.
And then we'll have, we'll have that, so that the posting closes on the 10th, couple of days, then we'll get the applicants, so we have some time before the 15th to do all our review and all that good stuff. Yeah, I think we were kind of on the same time last time.
We were working, working to get that done.
Okay.
If, if we have a, yeah, if we have late applicants, that would be the only, only thing. There may be some background work that you wouldn't hear until we got, got to the meeting.
Yeah. 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 The, just the only other thing I, I want to highlight, and I know you already shared this, we have some applicants who are in the process, and we don't have a completed application yet. But these are, these aren't just your mom and pops' like cover letter and resumes. I want people to understand that. These are like full-blown reference letters, these, I mean, they gotta write stuff. So these aren't just ones where you think you could jump on Indeed and click apply, right? So it's, there's a lot of that even in background, so I want to make sure.
And they have to write to you specifically about what you said the challenges and opportunities are, and that's, that's a way to screen them, and they're not gonna, if they're shotgunning applications, I mean, it's, it's easy to spot when-
Right.
They think they're writing a letter to you, and they haven't even addressed any of the issues that you said were important.
Yeah. True. Okay. Well, I, I think it sounds like we're gonna just stick with what we kind of had planned the last time through the rest of the process. We're gonna do the executive session on the 15th, we're gonna do that 6:30, 7:00, after our, our study session. When, when do we, so we review the applicants, and we're gonna pull in preliminary candidates, when do we, when does that work, get out to the community on who we're bringing in? Is that within a couple of days, or, or, or does that just come out when we just schedule the interviews? Or, I guess, again, trying to be as transparent as possible, but not early where all of a sudden we're, we're ruining it for someone.
We'll confirm where people are in the schedule, and then get that to you, and then the district can make that part of their release to media or to staff. Some districts ask us to write a media release, but typically, I, I know you've got Robin here that can do all that.
Typically, do districts say, you know, do an announcement saying, these are the six people who are gonna interview, and here's a little bit of information about them, or how does, what, what is, could you send us maybe, or a couple of examples of what other districts have done?
Yeah, so, some, some districts will publish the preliminary interview list and time. We'll ask each applicant to give us a one-page resume. That means I'm gonna have to cut things down, and then that can be actually on a table, or when people walk in, they can pick up those. They won't have all the information that you have, but it's, it's-
So are the press releases that go out before that typically just the person's name, or?
And just what they, who they are and what they do.
Okay.
Okay.
And that'll come after, after you've confirmed times and all that stuff. So within a few days, then we'll be able to turn something out to the public and say, this is who's coming in for, for interviews. Yeah, okay. Awesome. Any other questions, from anyone? Anything else? Dr. Pierce?
I can't think of anything, trying to look at more people, make sure, yeah. I think we got it all. And last time, I remember the, the Chromebook discussion and the, the forum, so I think you connected with our IT and communications folks on the, the forum for that, for the interview panel, and the observer panel. So we'll make sure that happens. I can't think of anything else.
All right.
Once, once, that's based on what's the questions are finalized.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, if nobody has anything else, we'll wrap up, and we'll adjourn a little earlier. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.